Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting, Wallingford Inland Wetlands Commission to Order. The date is Wednesday, December 4th, 2019. The time is 7:04. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Going on to consideration of the minutes. Oh, rope call, I'm sorry. Ally?
Ally McKean.
Yeah, Karen. Jim Vitale.
Michael Caruso.
Robert Simon.
Jennifer Pasreddy.
Aaron O'Hare, Environmental.
Okay. Consideration of the minutes, regular meeting, November 6th, 2019. Is there any corrections to the minutes? Any items? And I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of November 6th, 2019 be approved?
This is a motion made as a second? Second? Motion made in second, any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Epstein.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Epstein.
Epstein.
Epstein. Okay. The minutes for the special meeting were just finished. Rather than take the time to review them tonight, table those to the next meeting. Okay, going on to all business. Application A 1911.1, 739 North Main Street Extension. Yes, you might want to pull it out a little bit, though. And you've got to be sure to use the microphone when you're over there if you're presenting it. No, the one, the portable behind you. Now, I wasn't here at the last meeting. You didn't present anything at the last meeting. Okay. I'm not sure. Try again. I don't think it's on.
Hold it closer.
On the bottom, it should be an on/off.
You have to hold it relatively close.
Better?
I think so.
Okay. I'm Mike from Lenoa with TLB Architecture. I'll be very brief and I'll turn it over to Richard and Katie. We also have Kenny Michaels with us, Director of Parks and Rec. Michelle Borkman from Parks and Rec as well. Mike Savinelli and Dave Gielo. So if there's any administrative or commission questions, they're here to help. So this application tonight is for the replacement of the existing community pool, which is contemplated to essentially remove the two buildings that are on site, remove the massive asphalt-coated pool, and replace it with a much smaller pool in a single building, and then some more open space type recreation, such as an activity lawn, sand volleyball court, and a traditional playground. And then there'll also be a wet splash pad. So that's kind of the overview. I don't want to take a lot of time, so I'll turn it over to Katie, who can get into more detail on the technical side.
My name is Katie Mercier. I'm a professional engineer with Martinez Couch and Associates. Also here is Richard Couch, who's also a professional engineer here in Connecticut at Martinez Couch and Associates. I'm going to try to keep this also very brief. As Mike mentioned, the existing conditions are the large existing pool, there are two buildings on site, a series of shade structure gazebos, and a pump filter system right near the road.
Excuse me a moment. Keep in mind that this is a wetland.
Yep, I'm going to flip it over and show you.
Not a planning and zoning presentation.
Understood. Ready? This is going to fall on me. You can take that one, would you mind? Thank you very much. Wetlands, ready? I just wanted... So there's a 50-foot upland review area. Highlighted on this plan is the existing impervious cover that is within your upland review area associated with the wetlands. There are three, there's four wetland pockets on the site. The first is Payden's Brook, which runs from the east to the west at the north side of the site. We are not doing any work north of Payden's Brook. There's a small wetland pocket northeast. Again, we're not doing any work near that area. There's a pocket of wetlands in the southeast corner. South of the site is a large cemetery, upgrading uphill, and that goes down on an embankment. And then the parking lot is lower, the lowness of the pool, and then the brook is the lowest portion of the site. There are two very small wetland weep pockets along the south edge of the existing parking lot that are the only wetlands that we're going to be disturbing, will be disturbing some of the upland review area. So that same plan for proposed conditions. So here are the proposed conditions. Again, the yellow highlighted is the impervious area within the upland review area. The tan color is the 50-foot upland review area. Actually, I must switch to this plan. So this plan shows all of the disturbance that is within the upland review area. So the disturbance types are, we're going to be regrading this existing parking lot, and we're going to be installing a gabion wall in order to improve the grades along that south side of the parking lot, and to help with the erosion of that embankment. So that's one pocket of upland disturbance. The second portion of the upland disturbance is along the brook. Again, we are not disturbing any wetlands or watercourses associated with Payden's Brook. We are in the upland review area. The existing pool has a retaining wall that's right along this upper bend area that I'm pointing to now. That existing retaining wall is going to remain in place, so we're building on the upside of the retaining wall. The pool is decreasing in footprint, so this is going to become a filled lawn behind the retaining wall that's currently now concrete, and this also is going to become all lawn. There's going to be a portion of the sand volleyball court that's in the upland review area, and then a corner of the parking lot. The parking lot portion that's in the upland review area is to allow for bus circulation so that the buses aren't dropping off on the street, which becomes an unsafe condition. So by bumping out the parking lot, that allows for bus circulation and safe pedestrian ingress and egress through that end of the parking lot. That's not able to be done today. The other upland review area potential disturbance is there is an alternate, a bid alternate, not a wetland consideration alternate, a bid alternate that Parks and Rec is considering to have a trail through the lawn area, a one-way little spur trail that could potentially be used for educational purposes. So those are the upland review area disturbances. Any questions on that portion? I also have a plan about stormwater, but I didn't know if you wanted me to go to that.
First of all, you asked any questions. Where's the trail go to?
It's a dead-end trail.
How long a trail, and what's the educational purposes on the trail?
Mike will talk to that.
Sure. The primary purpose would be to let people walk along the edge of the wetlands to see the wetlands plants and materials. It's a very passive education.
I think in years past, there's been some fill in that area. I think the whole thing was a wetlands from about where the bathhouse is originally. But after a certain year, that classification, I think, changes. But go ahead.
So the last plan that I have for you today that was in the original submission is just summarizing the pre and post-stormwater flows. We looked at four different stormwater analysis points on site. The first one is, so this is existing conditions on your left and proposed conditions on your right. This is the cemetery that I mentioned previously, that's upgrading of the site. The first analysis point is this portion of the site that drains overland into North Main Street Extension. That's right along the edge of the site. It also is a portion of the cemetery that drains into the site before exiting, drains into like the entrance and then out. The second analysis point is there is a stormwater drainage system on site today in the parking lot. It has a piped connection into the town stormwater system right at the entrance. So that's our second analysis point, is that pipe that outlets into the town system. Our third analysis point is the portion that drains overland into Payden's Brook. Again, there's more on Payden's that drains into Payden's Brook on the north side, and then the whole watershed that's associated with Payden's Brook. We purely looked at the portion of the project site that contributes into Payden's Brook. And so that's Area 3. The fourth area, which isn't a stormwater volume analysis, is this null area. So if rain falls today into the pool, it stays in the pool. The pool discharges, based off of my understanding currently, into the town stormwater network when it's empty.
Sanitary.
Sanitary?
Sanitary.
So that's existing conditions, the four analysis points. We looked at the same four analysis points in proposed conditions. So E1 becomes P01, draining overland. There's a decrease in flows, decrease in volumes. We looked at, I'm going to skip number two for a second because that's the most complicated. It's the one, the majority of the site. E3 is the one that goes into Payden's Brook. That also is a decrease. We did consider in our calculations that little path we were talking about before. We treated that as impervious. It's proposed, if it's constructed, to be a gravel path, but it's always conservative to assume that someday down the line, some future commission or whatnot would decide to pave it. And so it's always conservative to assume that what it would be like if it was paved. So we assumed it was paved. There's still a decrease of flows from the site contributing into Payden's Brook, in both flows and volumes for all the storm events, 2 through 100. The main portion of the site, because that null area, the portion that the rain that falls directly into the pool, because the pool is decreasing in size, the area that was previously a pool now gets rainwater that would go into the storm drainage network. So there's an increase in area in that number two analysis point. So to offset that, we're going to do a large series of underground retention units, concrete units. Because of the high groundwater, they will not have any opportunity to exfiltrate the water. So it's purely a retention system, or detention system, I'm sorry, that the water will go into, stay a little bit, and it will stage the water through the outlet structure out into that same piped outlet that's currently in the storm, existing storm network on the road. So, long story short, there is a decrease in flow rates also through that pipe structure because of the underground units we're placing. We placed the units, they're underneath this front activity lawn. A portion of that is currently pool, so we placed those in order to do a cost savings. Since there's already going to have to be a hole there today, we'll just put the underground detention in that same area that's a void, so.
Is there a spring in the bottom of the pool?
No, but the bottom of the pool is close to groundwater.
You sure there's not a spring in there that had a pipe going out pumping it into Payden's Brook? Because that originally was an ice pond back when. I'm pretty sure there was, there's a spring in the bottom, underneath the asphalt.
I suppose it's possible. It never showed up in any of the, in the research we did.
There's nothing that shows up pumping out the backside of the pool?
Only what was put there in the 90s, but it's a pipe system, not a spring. There's a, there's a well, a dewatering well that they use to drain the pool, that pipes out to the brook. That's being removed. So we're going to tie all the pool drainages now into sanitary. But that system was installed in the 90s renovation.
The, there's no water that flows over the dam? In a high storm event, when heavy rain, I mean, and your future one is going into the sanitary, but the present one doesn't overflow into the brook?
I suppose if it was a very significant rain event, it might. But not under normal conditions.
You're talking about when the pool is closed, the water rains in there, you have a bad storm, that water's being pumped out and pumped into the sanitary system?
Right.
Why is that?
Because it has chlorine in it. If anything that touches the pool water becomes chlorinated and goes to the sanitary.
Well, it's not drained for the winter, then? There is still water left in the pool?
In the winter, they'll typically leave the, a couple of feet of water in the pool, but not full.
That's funny that they dump it in the sanitary because they're so protective of getting clean water into their system because it's got to be processed.
Yeah, it's very, it's one part per million. It's very low level, so it's not, by the time it gets to the treatment plan, it's negligible, but the deep requirements won't allow us to... If there's no sanitary system available, they'll allow you to do a subsurface system, or by agreement, do a de-chlorination process, and then everybody checks it to make sure there's no chlorine, and then you can go to water. But because you have the system, we have to go to it.
In the downsizing of this project, how are you going to protect the area around the south side of, what area you're disturbing, what type of protection are you going to have?
I'll let Katie speak to that.
The south side of...
Well, if you look at the north and south under your construction project, the north side would be the bank of the brook, south side would be where the pool is now. How are you going to protect that whole area you just ran your finger around from any kind of disturbance or soil going into the brook?
There is absolutely no work being performed on the north side, so there wouldn't be any construction activity.
How about the south side?
On the south side, there's silt fence going to be installed at the perimeter. There's a temporary sediment trap. I can switch to the plan, but the temporary sediment trap that we've added, that was in the additional materials that were provided this week. And on the, during demolition, we're going to, the first thing the contractor will install will be this gabion wall and the storm drainage, proposed storm drainage on the south side and tie into the existing network. That's how it's going to be in the proposed conditions. And that will allow the flows that come down the embankment from the cemetery to not enter the construction site. A lot of the construction site ENS measures that you place, that you, the contractor, are placed based off of the contributing drainage area that enters. So by diverting the portion of the site that's undisturbed, we're only having to deal with the stormwater that's following on the site. We looked extensively at the demolition sequence and the construction sequence, and that's been provided to the commission this week to take those considerations into account.
Has anybody tested to see what the volume of water is coming out of those two weep holes you talk about? As far as flow?
No, the flow has not been measured.
You don't know if you're going to open up a can of worms there and there's going to be, there might be a spring or well that's coming from the cemetery, not a well, I'm sorry, a spring-fed weepage.
So currently, those seeps seep out, and then they seep across the existing parking lot to parakeet basins that are opposite, and if it was being used in the winter, would cause an icing condition. Our hope is by adding the underdrain behind the gabion wall, and also the underdrain in front of the gabion wall, that passes through that whole wetland area, those two little wetland pockets, and then on either side of it as well, that that would help improve the situation proposed so that they're not getting the same water flow across the parking lot from the weep. So there won't be a wetland there anymore.
All right, you talked about, was any soil testing been done in the pool?
Yeah, we've done, we've done a complete geotechnical analysis in the existing pool area and around the perimeter, and some groundwater wells as well.
And what do you get for the soils? Are there sandy soils, clay soils, what type of soils?
Most of, most of the soils in the pool area, again, were placed there in the 90s, so it's sand and gravel. And the parking lot area goes back to probably the 50s, and so the borings that were done in the 90s in the parking lot area are also sandy and gravelly.
So you're going by the 1990 borings?
No, we did, we did new borings in the area where we're building new structures, but we had borings from two previous efforts in areas where we're not doing work, so those soils are still in place.
There were six borings that were most recently done, and they're shown on this plan. They're all mostly in the vicinity, as he mentioned, of the main structures in the site that are going to have subsurface components.
Are the soils stable enough to put your tanks underground to catch your overflow waters?
Yeah, one of the interesting things here, in 30 years, is the first time we've ever had a project where we're building all of the structure, but we don't have to dig a hole. The hole's already there. So basically, we're taking off the bituminous and burying all of the detention system on the existing gravel base, and then filling from there. So we have very little, relatively little excavation to do. It's mostly a fill condition, so we're not going to have, you know, big stockpiles of material and, you know, a lot of transfer of existing and borrow coming and going.
Okay, and I did not really understand, or I didn't hear, where is this water going to go that goes into the retention tanks? Into the sanitary or into the storm?
Storm.
Yes, it's stormwater. The retention, this retention system here that you're talking about?
Yeah.
That's picking up everything from the catch basins and the lawn inlet, so it's all rainwater to begin with. So it's going, that's what's going to be discharged into the stormwater connection into the street.
Is that gravity or pumped?
Gravity.
Gravity, okay.
Half percent slopes because of the flatness of the site, but it's all gravity.
So overall, so overall, the water flow into Payden's Brook and the wetlands will be reduced?
That is correct.
By how much?
I don't have the numbers in front of me. If you want the exact values, I can flip to them.
Is it somewhere in front of me in the packet we just got tonight?
No, it would be in the first packet that you received, in the stormwater analysis
Something, it sums up in here somewhere.
Yep. So I am looking on page, hang on, I'm going to borrow this corner of table, sorry. In the stormwater analysis and narrative, so it starts on page 14 of 28.
Mm-hmm.
And so 14 of 28 is E1. That's the discharge that goes overland to the street, and those are all decreases. You said you wanted to know about...
I just want to know like the bottom line from everything, how much less water goes into the brook?
So Payden's Brook is on page 16 of 28.
Okay.
So...
So we're talking about a half a CFS.
And again, Payden's Brook is a, I don't have the exact total flow, but the flow rates represented here, again, are only the flows from our portion on the south side of the site. That is not all of Payden's Brook, so...
Okay.
It's a very small percentage decrease, as far as the water quality of, or the water quantity that Payden's Brook currently sees. But we're not increasing it, so any structures that are, there's two culverts, we're not going to be burdening them in any way by increasing the flows.
All right, that's it.
Hey, Dave?
Hi.
No questions? Robert?
Got a quick question, going back to the other diagram you have on up there.
Which one?
Go back one.
Gladly.
You mentioned about putting up a gabion wall over there, and I see you have two water ponds.
Yep.
Are they going, which side of the pond are they going? Are they eliminating the ponds, or are you keeping the ponds, or what are you doing?
The two wetland seep areas that we were talking about are very small.
Okay.
Each of these parking spaces is only nine feet wide, so this, they're each about 18 feet long, and maybe 10 feet, I don't have the exact square footage in front of me, but just eyeballing it, probably like 18 by 9. They're about the size of a parking space. And so the retaining wall will be up gradient of them...
Okay.
To help fix, that slope embankment is very steep and potentially erodible. It's already, depending on where you are along that...
So those are in the parking lot themselves, is what you're saying?
No, they're going to be, they're right now at the edge of the parking lot. They're right at the curb line. And tomorrow, or tomorrow, after the project is built, they'll also still be, if they were there, at the curb line, but the intent is, is that they won't...
They'll still be existing, is what you're saying?
Existing, they're on the curb line.
Okay.
And we chose a gabion wall so that it's porous, so that we're not damming anything up, so if, if, you know, the natural flow down the hill from the cemetery is not going to be impeded if we had a flood condition or something.
But that's exactly contrary to what was said as far as there's going to be no water coming down the hill entering your site. That's what was comment was made before.
The water, the water that's creating the seepage, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the water that's creating the seepage is primarily coming below grade from the cemetery area. We don't know the genesis of it.
I might disagree with you. I think the parking lot got filled, the wetland in this section, those two wetland air pockets are part of a system that existed before the parking lot was made, because that parking lot never went back that far in the 50s. The parking lot ended way in front of the bathhouse or the concession stand. So when the parking lot was made in the back of that whole area that was, I'm going to say was a potential wetland area, those two seepage areas didn't get filled.
So those two seepage areas are in front of, closer, so the existing building that you're talking about is existing back here. So they are closer, but it's possible. I was not here in the 50s.
The parking lot didn't go back that far. The original parking lot didn't go back that far. But now, you're going to put this gabion wall in...
With underdrains behind it?
You mean up gradient, coming from the cemetery side.
Correct.
And how high is this gabion wall going to be? And it's going to be higher than the ground coming over to it? So the runoff from the cemetery is going to come down and stop at the gabion wall and try to get down into your underdrain?
Mm-hmm. So there are a series of spots in the vicinity of the two wetland pockets, since that's what we are talking about right now. The bottom of the down gradient side is 101.75. The up gradient side is, side is 106.75, so a five-foot vertical distance difference. And then the top of wall is 107.35. So the wall is taller than the ground.
Is it going to be two feet taller than the ground, or one foot taller than the ground?
.6.
Of a foot?
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And how far back is the gabion basket wall going to go?
Um, it's...
Just the year disturbed theory? No, 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 no. The length of the property?
Um, I don't...
It's not going to go the whole length of the property?
No, it starts here, sir, and then it continues to here, and then it switches into just a regular embankment. That's softened because...
And is it, is it going to be on the property? And is it, is it going to be on the property line or is it gonna be on the uh pool line? Pool property, hundred percent?
It's all a hundred percent on the on the pool property, um I'm switching uh to the CJ two hundred plan. This long dash, short dash, long dash, short dash, that's the property line. Um, and so there still will be, there's no disturbance for the first fifteen feet Um behind, and then the existing parking lot, which it's hard to see, is act- actually comes a lot More south, we're actually pulling the parking lot away from the embankment on this first Um in the area to the west of the proposed wall, we're pulling the parking lot Um away to straighten the alignment, because right now it curves more.
And and you're going to have an underdrain on both sides of the wall?
Yes, sir.
And they're both gonna empty into the system in the road?
Yes, sir.
Not that it makes a big difference, but I think if you really search the history, that the pool had A clay material hauled in in the fifties. You're not gonna find this very, I wouldn't say a very little virgin material there. I don't know quite what the spring was and the pond was before the the this red red material came in. That that got hauled in in the fifties to try and make to create a beach area. And then probably early in the sixties is when the asphalt got laid down? That, your record shows about that?
Nineteen fifty-nine is the date of the drawing, so it makes sense to sixty.
Wow. Okay. Next, anything else?
That was the extent of what we had to present to you. If there's.
Okay, commissioners, any questions? Okay, Aaron?
Okay, I've got some questions on on this conversation we're just having, this discussion we're just having. Is there a cross-sectional drawing, I just found it of the gabion wall in here, but is there a detailed drawing of the trenches associated with the gabion wall?
No. There's a detail for the underdrains and there's a detail for the wall, but there's not one that shows both.
Oh, so the underdrains, I call them trenches, but.
Yes, underdrains.
Okay.
Underdrains if it's a perforated pipe and storm pipe if it's not a perforated pipe, or I don't know the exact name of the detail, I'd have to look at the plan. Yes, we have two details, one for a pipe that doesn't have holes and one for a pipe that does have holes.
So I I can't find the details for the trench, but underdrain, how deep is that trench?
Um it varies, it um has a minimum depth of two feet, but then it has to have a half a percent positive slope, uh you know, so that Water flows downhill, so that's the slope that, so in some areas it would get deeper.
Okay, so how does, I did ask a question recently of of uh Richard Couch, engineer on this. How what happens in the winter, and I didn't really get a satisfactory answer as far as, since it's only two feet deep And the the seep, you know, the water's seeping down the hill, how how does it behave in the winter? How's it, does it function?
The portion that's on the far east, um which is the shallowest portion, is um obviously bef- above freezing elevation. Um, so that would just be the same as frozen ground, the underdrain wouldn't be effective, but as as you go westerly along the wall, The um grade behind the wall stays pretty constant, it has some fluctuations, but the pipe continues to get deeper. Um, so it would probably run to some extent during the winter.
I'm sorry, pr- it would probably what, run?
Flow.
Flow?
You're gonna be.
It would pick up the groundwater if the groundwater is moving, and if it if it freezes, it would freeze. As if the underdrain wasn't there.
You're gonna be, uh you've got the underground at minus two feet and then you've got three or four feet above the ground. So that drain on that side of the gabion basket is going to be uh covered with three or four feet of soil.
No, sir.
It's not.
No, just two feet at the highest.
Two feet at at, so the so the drain is gonna be level with the bottom of the wall? Same elevation as the wall or or below the wall?
On behind the wall.
Yes, on the cemetery side of the wall.
Cemetery side of the wall, it will be two feet lower than the ground that's there.
But not two feet lower than the footing of the wall?
Correct, so the one, the underdrain that's in front of the wall would be lower than the wall. So the underdrain at the back of the wall is high and the underdrain in front of the wall is low, just like the ground Behind the wall is high and the ground in front of the is low.
That's good.
Um, that's a a standard engineering practice.
Yeah, that's good. There's no no concern about in the wintertime, it'll be shut down as far as it freezing and causing a heat to have the walls tumble? Or any kind of disturbance from the?
I wouldn't imagine so with it being a gabion wall and um Everything, I don't know, Richard, do you have anything else to say to that extent?
Yeah, no, no concerns.
Nope.
No concern? I mean, I've I've been at the cemetery because we groom it and uh that water barrels down, the surface water barrels down pretty good down there. You know, if you get a thunderstorm, it doesn't have a chance to soak in because of the clay material that's at the cemetery. That water, that's why I am concerned that Your disturbance, you're gonna have that clay material come down and clog up your gabion walls, or it's not gonna percolate the way you want it to. Eventually, it's just gonna come up over the top of the the walls.
Most retaining walls, um it's more typical to just do the single underdrain behind the wall, not the underdrain behind and in front, we are taking Um advanced measures um because of the site conditions at the site.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Right, I have.
Wait, on the question about the detail for the standard underdrain trench, it's on CX one oh two.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so the environmental planners report went out in your packet last week, just the day before Thanksgiving. And um So I did a site investigation of November twenty-first And then later on that day, I met with Richard Couch and Martinez Couch and I went over uh Uh ninety-five percent of my concerns and then he had a week to come back Or just a little over a week to come back with the revisions that I requested or or new information, further information. And that came in yesterday afternoon, I do, I didn't get a chance to uh Ask some questions on that new submittal, I I do wanna ask some questions on the new submittal. Um but going back to my environmental planners report, I go through the existing conditions, uh the wetlands out there, Um, the uh regular activities. In some detail, the two regulated activities are filling of those two small wetlands Um on the side with the cemetery, which we've been talking about, the seep wetlands. Um I guess you're excavating them and then not really filling them, really excavating them.
Yes, to place the wall, it would be excavation.
Okay, and then uh the other, are all the activities which we've been talking about within fifty feet of the wetlands or and the uh stream? Uh Alright, so then there was a bunch of requested information, I had sixteen questions and they've all been Uh addressed in the materials that came in yesterday, some of them I do have some remaining questions on. Um I didn't want them, it was some discussion, should the, should we redo the whole plan set? And I said, please don't redo the whole plan set, so they They put the revisions on this one sheet that you got tonight in your clip, the one with the black clip on it. Um, they did one sheet of all the revisions on there. Now, when they move forward in planning and zoning process, they will take that, they will separate the erosion controls off this sheet and All the different information, put it in its proper place, I guess, when they get to further comments and further revisions. But I didn't think we needed to go and revise all sixteen pages of the uh site plan set. So that's why the information is kinda jammed on there for tonight's meeting. Okay. One thing, uh as far as the wetlands go, um In that clip handout tonight, they're very important, is the wetland, I asked the wetland scientist To briefly describe the wetland features, because that was missing from the original submittal. So uh Jen Benno describes them briefly, the different habitats, because there's several different wetland habitats out there And the pictures are very good of the wetlands, so you can get a sense of what it what it looks like out there. Um Yeah, it's um, I don't, if we if we, if the commission does not approve this tonight, you might wanna consider a site walk To get the lay of the land out there, because it it's kind of interesting. Okay, um another thing that I asked for is the original submittal had the soil scientist soil field sketch. We require that, when the soil scientist goes out, he marks on a, on a uh a map that he has and then he takes it back and the engineer takes those spots and puts it on the plans. Anyway, so I wanted the soils information put on the, in the site plan, it was not, so um Actually, so that's something I'm actually disappointed in, the soils were put on the site plan, but these aren't the soil, the wetland scientist soils. These are the soils, I believe, from the NRCS?
Yes.
Okay, so that they don't match the soil scientist's field sketch that you got in your first application.
So the the field sketch um was based off of the wetland flags and those wetland flags are all depicted on all of the plans?
Yes, they are, no, they are, there's no discrepancy there, it's just the type of soils, he calls out different type of soils and they're called out differently In the NRCS, and that's one reason I don't like to use NRCS, we, the commission usually gets A a soil scientist to do onsite ordering and doing these the soil classifications. Because the NRCS is generalized, you know, for uh large acreages, it's based on farming, it's for generally for Farming purposes, so large acreages, so anyway, I'm just pointing that out, that the soils information that came out, that came in tonight is Different from the wetland soil information.
I apologize, that was misunderstanding.
Okay, and it's You know, the function is the same, I mean, the what's gonna happen to these wetlands are the same, no matter what, the soil type is called. So what is proposed to happen to the wetlands, so that's that's not a big thing, okay. Um, on this map that we were all handed out tonight, the trails of the trail, maybe it's not on this map, but is, where is the treatment, the proposed treatment For the construction of this trail, where is that spelled out in any of the documents?
Um, so the trail construction, I have the CJ two hundred sheet, that's the new sheet that you received um this week. Um, it's going to just be constructed at existing grade and we did um per uh the previous discussions that you had with Richard, We did pull it away from the wetlands a little bit more than it previously was.
Yes.
Um, to to reflect that comment. Um, so there is silt fence on the down gradient side of that lawn area. Um, but the disturbance there is going to be very minimal, I mean, all they're doing, if they do construct that trail, would be Just taking out enough to box out the trail and then just put it, taking away that material and placing Um the gravel material that is the proposed trail cross-section.
So is there, there's no detailed drawing or cross-section or materials or?
Um, I don't know if there's a, if the Richter and Seegan sheets have a detail for the trail.
Now, there's, for our proposed activity, we should have some kind of.
Under understood.
Information about.
Um if it's shown, it'd be on the landscape architect plans, which they're confirming for me at the table momentarily.
And in the latest, while they're looking for that, in the latest submittal, yesterday.
Yes.
Um, you pulled it back and you're gonna have a five-foot buffer or three-foot buffer? Three-foot buffer?
It's it's either three foot or five foot. Um, but the silt fence is now about five feet off of the wetlands. Um we are putting even um silt fence just around there to prevent Um not necessarily siltation because of the direction of the ground, but more to prevent the contractor From meandering into the wetlands, so he's aware of where the edge would be. Um and then they're doing some um plantings along to, again, um Future maintenance would be to not, to no longer mow that area that's currently Being mowed, you'll notice in Jen's report, she mentions that a portion of that wetland is currently being mowed, because nobody really understands that it's a wetland. Um by placing the trail and by placing those plantings, um it will actually help the the wetland reestablish in a better way that it would not be mowed. Is my understanding of the the future maintenance of that area.
I don't, it, I mean, when I was out there, saw the mowed area, I don't object to it being mowed, because it allows people to go back and appreciate Enjoy the beautiful mature trees that are all around there, so it's not Um, it it affords people a peek at into the into the wet forest back there, so. But you talk about, okay, so it's a landscape buffer treatment of three-foot width between the trail and the wetlands.
Just be low height.
I'm sorry?
It would be low height plantings, I'm not a landscape architect, um but the the landscape architect did Uh propose like hostas or some other low height, the wetland does sort of, there's a bulge of it that's um Away from the tree line and then a portion of the trail bows in, so right what you were saying, with the opportunity to see the um The wooded wetland portion, the tree line um will be maintained. And so the trail does bow in, so the end of the trail would see that area that you're talking about.
Aaron, that, we're, go ahead, is this an add-on? Just trail you're talking about, or is this, it was just gonna be an add-on?
It is an add-on and quite frankly, the commission um is willing to not do the trail if it becomes an issue. It's, it it's something that was proposed early on, um town council was sort of on the fence about it, the commission Voted to not do it, um we were, we left it in for the future, if this educational component got some legs. Um but for, frankly, for our project, if the trail went away, that that would be fine.
So this is an add-on that they're not even sure they're gonna do, so why are we question, these questions you're asking, this is down the road, further down the road? Can we, can we work what they've given us in paper tonight and then and then set the trail thing aside if that happens to? It's gonna happen, then they come back in front of us with with a revised print?
Right, and they could, well, you could go ahead and approve the plan just with a condition that it doesn't include the trail.
Right.
As I was suggesting, and then at some later date, they come back with a more detailed plan for a proposed trail with plantings and such.
The only thing I'd like to see on the plan is maybe a couple of wetland plaques, you know, in the northern section where they're not gonna do the trail. Wherever there's an area, open area that people can see that, you know, that that there are some wetlands in the area, I didn't see anything on your recommendations for this, but.
I think that's a great idea, I just didn't think to put it on there, that's a great idea, yes.
Alright, so let's put aside the trail and work on what we've received and what we wanna do for tonight. So you're all set with these sixteen items then?
Well, I'd like to ask some more questions if you have the time, do you wanna take the time now?
I think these should have been discussed before tonight's meeting, I mean, you wanna go do the work, we're sitting here and you're having this Conversation back and forth and we're not really there, I would think that you would have had all these sixteen items strained out. But if they're not strained out to your satisfaction, then it's gotta be tabled till till your satisfaction.
Or maybe we can go through them, I don't, I.
I, you know, why are we gonna go through them, this is supposed to have been already addressed before the eleventh hour? Every month we do this, you have your concerns, they answer them and you yay your name and then you come here before us, what we're supposed to approve. Why do we spend hours on addressing your answers when they're supposed to be here already? I don't understand that. You couldn't have a phone conversation with the engineer and say, hey, I'm confused about number six, I'm confused about number eleven? Every month is the same thing, Aaron, we spend an hour hour going back and forth.
We did have our conference face to face on November twenty-first.
So you've got all your answers then?
I got all my questions put out and and then now we have the answers here. You can table it if you want to, or we can um try to harden up some of these things that were submitted.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, if there's sixteen questions, right, at five minutes apiece.
Eighty minutes?
Eighty minutes, an hour and a half, and that's assuming that every question could be handled in Five minutes and also assumes at the end of the eightieth minutes that we're gonna know and have something really Definite with a recommendation that we can understand, so that I would say We'd be far better off uh tabling it, let it come in next month with everything tied up and so it comes to a very You know, maybe a few concluding remarks, put it for a vote in an approve or deny. But I mean, I think it would get, you know, even on the questions that are being asked, you know, you you know, The engineers trying to look at this and explain it to you and hold the thing and hold a copy of the plans and we're trying to understand it and it gets a bit, it gets difficult, quite difficult.
Well, okay, or another alternative would be to approve it with a bunch of conditions tonight.
But, okay, and and my, I, okay, and I'll see if I can, my problem with An approval with a bunch of commissions, you know, conditions, you know, it's not really like. a bunch of commissions, you know, conditions, you know, it's not really like a concrete, you know, if it's a contract, you need all the contractual items all ironed out. Okay, but if you say, uh, but if you say a contract, subject this, subject that, subject this, subject that, really you don't have a contract, don't have anything really clear. So, you know, um, for both reasons, um, and also the void, you know, keeping a whole staff here for another eighty minutes, um, I think that really would be better off tabling it.
If I may, there's sixteen questions, but I, I can't ima, I mean, most of these are fairly routine and have been answered, I think to your satisfaction. Are there, how many are actually worthy of discussion?
The sixteen that you, she asked, you, you answered tonight, the young lady up there answered probably fourteen of the sixteen.
Right.
Because I just went back over them. Soil types, you know, the turtles, you know, these things, fourteen out of the sixteen were answered. And the two that weren't answered, I, it's something she has to absorb through the project because the answers are there.
Right.
If you guys didn't get them to them already, but-
But I think, you know, if you take the trail out of the mix, um, the, the rest of these are, have been answered in Katie's presentation, I think accepted.
Erin doesn't agree that they're answered. She wants to go through more of them. And she wants to discuss them over and over. So it isn't, it isn't us that here's a document produced by our staff and she's not ready to say all the answers are satisfactory. And I'm not ready to give you approval tonight for unanswered questions that our environmental planner is not comfortable with. Because this is not something we wanna do. So either Erin's gonna have to understand what's not on these fourteen or sixteen questions and, and learn to answer outside of this hearing or table it, because that's-
Maybe we can take five minutes to get them answered. Can we try that?
I think I've already raised my objection to that, because five minutes and answers eighty minutes.
Gentlemen, can I make a comment here? One of the things that-
Just need to-
I'm Mike Savinelli, I'm in the Parking Reg Commission, I'm the chairman of the pool committee. We are under a very tight timetable, um, to get this thing going. And if we get tabled tonight, we lose a month. We have a planning and zoning meeting scheduled for Monday night that we'll have to cancel. As this thing progresses, we will not get a shovel in the ground in time and we'll lose an entire year. And we'll be faced with inflationary numbers and things of that nature. So I, I, if Erin says she has five minutes, I would love for you to give her the opportunity because it would be to our benefit and the town's benefit not to drag this thing on.
You were thirty days late in submitting this. You wanted to submit this in September and it didn't happen. So now you, because you were behind in your submitting and we're supposed to rush through so you can get to planning and zoning.
I, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Well, I know there was discussions around, oh, we're ready to submit and we'll get it in in October, it didn't get September, you didn't get October, you got November.
Right.
But you wanted to submit in September.
Is that right, Dave? Did we wanna, um?
We, we were advised, uh, to not submit until town council approved the project.
Now all of a sudden, wetlands has gotta go for them.
Well, I-
I'll give, I'll give you five minutes. Eight o'clock, if she doesn't say okay, it's tabled.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, your new temporary sediment trap, I don't get, it doesn't show a discharge point. Does it, does it sit there? Is there a, do you, are you proposing a discharge, a way for this trap to discharge? Is it going into the stream?
Um, yes, it would over, it would fill up and then it would just overflow off the northern side. I, I don't know where else you would put it.
Well, no, 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 but with, usually you have some kind of riser pipe or, 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 or stone weir, a stone weir, riser pipe?
It is located at one of the proposed lawn inlets. Um, we could look at the construction sequence, um, of connecting that in, but-
That could be maybe a condition of approval to add a, um, a, a, a way to get the sediment out of that before it goes into the stream?
Well, the sediment would collect, it's sized properly to hold the sediment, the stormwater would, would, um, overflow.
We can provide you with a, a detail of the outlet to that September sediment basin, Erin.
The echo, the, I can't hear you, Richard, I'm sorry.
We can, we can provide you with a detail for the outlet for the-
Yeah, okay, good, good. Um, another one, your ECBs, um, a condition of approval would be that they're biodegradable, not the plastic ones that last forever because they entrap birds and, and other animals in them.
Yes, we can do the straw coconut, biodegradable ones.
Okay, stormwater management maintenance plan, it's, you've got a, just a condition of approval would be that it doesn't address cleaning a few of the, like the catch basins, the underground, under drains, so you would add that to it. It's missing the, to maintain the catch basins and the under drains.
I believe it has cleaning out the sumps, but, um, we did provide clean outs at all the under drains that could also allow the under drains to be flushed.
And any-
Add a bullet.
And any other drainage facility I might have overlooked?
Understood.
Gabions, gabions, I don't know if they have to be maintained, do they? Probably not.
Well, we'll, and we'll, we'll refine the final, um, plan to your satisfaction.
And on the, um, on the drawing, I don't understand, maybe you could explain this to me, why you have to bring, down by the, where the trail was gonna be proposed, when I think I now, we're not gonna propose that moving forward. But anyway, down there, you have a shark bend in the river. Why is the silt fence like two feet from the river down there?
Oh, right here? It could be pulled away.
Yeah, but why is, why are, why was it proposed that way originally?
We just placed it on the tree line.
Okay, let's say we're not doing the trail there, you guys still wanna fill that area?
There's no grading happening in that area.
Then why do you need a silt fence?
We could pull it all the way to the trail.
And if you're not doing the trail tonight, if we're not gonna move forward, you could pull that silt fence all the way to the parking lot, right?
Yes, um, if we were not doing the trail, we actually already have the solid, the dark bold silt fence would be if there is no trail, the, the thinner lined silt fence would be if there is a trail. So we have both options of silt fence there already.
Okay, and for this, back to the temporary sediment trap, you didn't, to do that where you placed it, I hope you're not gonna cut down any mature trees-
No.
For the trap that weren't gonna be, I mean, if you have to cut them down for the pool, I understand, but for the trap?
Correct. It is in an area that would not cause any additional clearing that wouldn't, actually, I don't think there's any even existing trees there. I think those, all the plus symbol trees are new, all the dot symbol trees are existing. So we are keeping us very, a series of existing trees throughout the site and adding a series of proposed trees.
And then my last question is about de-watering. You go on in this answer to my question, about two and a half pages all about de-watering. And that's great, but I don't think it's what I was asked, I was, I, it's somehow this is as if you're de-watering facilities. And I was thinking of de-watering dirt.
Yep, that de-watering is a standard, it actually was pulled from our construction contractor technical specification that would, the contractor would be provided on, um, a standard project about how he would de-water a trench.
Okay, your five minutes are up. You got any, you're all set to approve?
Yeah, so the, the condition of approval there would be to provide some way-
No condition of approval. Are you, you all set here? I mean, you, all you wanna do is add conditions of approval to the, to the maintenance, to this, to this. This, these are things that should have been discussed and hammered. Are you ready to approve?
We can move forward with the conditions that we've laid out tonight.
What, what conditions we laid out tonight?
Well, that the, in the wetland plaques would go in.
Yeah.
Uh, you can say in locations as per environmental planners approval.
That's fine.
Um, that the trail end of the project, the trail part is not gonna move forward tonight.
I, I don't know why, because I don't see the trail as being a detriment to this project at all, but they wanna take it out, we'll take it out, so there's no trail associated.
I don't think it's a detriment, we just need more detail about what's-
I don't, I don't think it's a detriment at all.
No, I don't either. I agree with you.
But, well, you stopped them and convinced them to take it out.
Usually we get more information.
All right, then it's out.
Okay.
It's out.
Um, and the ECBs are biodegradable, or maybe it's already biodegradable, I don't know? Or, anyway, that would be a condition of approval, they're biodegradable.
What has to be right, everything?
And for the stormwater management maintenance plan to be, miss the holes, the hole, to fill up the holes in that, uh, plan that they handed in.
ECB is erosion control blanket.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, have you gotta really talk slow here?
Erosion, control blanket. It's only placed on, um, a sloped area and it's only on this south embankment, it's a very thin area, but we have no problem with providing biodegradable ones.
So, okay.
That's just what you expect.
Okay, so now I've got, um, wetland placards, placards be installed and two of the erosion control blankets be placed.
Uh, uh, biodegradable.
Oh, B, I'm sorry, B, O.
Those stapled and-
Um, yes, even the biodegradable ones are stapled.
The, uh, additional trail will be eliminated from this plan.
Additional-
Trail, I guess.
And the sediment trap outlet facility will be provided.
Wait, we go slow. We go slow.
Sediment-
Sorry, because I've got to do the writing, okay? Excuse me. Okay, so that when I'm writing, you can't tell me anything else.
Okay, sorry.
No, Mr. O'Hare.
Sediment trap outlet design be submitted.
And trap outlet, um-
Discharge outlet be submitted.
Discharge outlet. This is why we have to go slow.
And, and the last one is they beef up their stormwater plan, their stormwater maintenance plan.
Beef up?
Well, they've got a few holes in it, so-
Okay.
Revised, revised stormwater maintenance plan.
Revised, revised.
Slip them in.
Storm water manage plan. Okay.
Hey, hang on a minute. All right, commissioners, I, uh, are you, have any other concerns? Any other comments before we go further? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to determine the significant activity of this application.
I've been doing so much, oh, here he is. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A-19-11.1, 739 North Main Street Extension, TLB Architecture be deemed not to be a significant activity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Offer a vote. Uh, we've got all, all, uh, primary members here, right? You, you, you got, you give me four. Okay, Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Now I'll entertain a motion to approve or deny this application.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that application A-19-11.1, 739 North Main Street Extension, TLB Architecture LLC be approved with the following conditions of approval. One, uh, that wetland placards be placed as appropriate, that the erosion control blankets be biodegradable, that the additional trail shown on the plan be eliminated, that the sediment trap discharge outlet plan will be submitted, and, uh, that the applicant will provide a revised stormwater management plan.
Motion made, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Uh, Mike? Okay, calls for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, one start date.
Uh, the plan is to be out to bid in February and start as soon as the ground thaws.
So you're not gonna start till next spring anyhow?
I'm sorry?
You're not gonna start till next spring anyhow?
Construction, right, but we have to get out to bid, um, give them time to bid in contract, um, so that we have a contractor on board getting permits in March, late March.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Ladies. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is A-19-11.2, 425 South Cherry Street.
Good evening, for the record, my name's Jeff Dewey, I'm with BL Companies, I'll be re representing for the project at 425 South Cherry Street. Um, I had a brief presentation at the last meeting, some of you were here, some were not, so I'll, I'll be brief, but I'll go back over, uh, the basic project. This is the project site, there's an existing, oh, shoot, I forgot how big this building is, I know it's big, eighty-three thousand seven hundred square foot building, uh, the parcel is a little over seven acres. Um, as you look at this plan, here's the north arrow, so to the north of the project is Ball Street, to the east is South Cherry Street, and to the west is Pent Road, further to the west is the landfill. Uh, basically, as the site exists right now, as you can see it, there's a large building area here, this line is the property line, this is a gravel area that was leased out as a parking lot for one of the neighbors. This darker brown area here was used for Public Works, they were excavating sand to use for, uh, road treatment during the winter and they were putting, uh, spoils and miscellaneous fill back. Uh, we've recently done some test holes out here and some, uh, permeability testing to see what the soils are and, no big surprise, Public Works put a bunch of crappy soil back. They took good sand and got rid of junk.
Of course.
Right? So that's the basic site. And basically what happens now is the site drains, this roof has outlets that go on all four sides. On South Cherry Street, the existing drainage out here is basically dry wells. So there's catch basins with dry wells, there's nothing on Ball Street, there's a series of catch basins down Pent Road, which this ninety percent of the site drains to, and this has a discharge point, uh, ways down into the landfill area. Um, there are no actual wetlands on the site. Um, the reason we are here is basically the definition, and let me just read the section off properly for you, uh, regulation section two point one point Z point two for regulated activity, uh, the creation of twenty thousand square feet of impervious surface, uh, we're taking this site and we're creating forty-six thousand eight hundred square feet. Basically, we're gonna be paving this back portion. So the proposed project, and again, this is why we're here, is because we're creating this amount of, uh, paved area on the site. Um, again, we're not changing much of the drainage of the site, the site still drains this way into the Pent Road system. What we're doing is we're taking all the roof area, we're putting it into an infiltration system, then we're taking all this proposed pavement back here into another infiltration system. Um, right now, these areas which in existing conditions are completely paved, you can see we're adding a landscape element to it, um, which is gonna reduce the amount of flows into the upper part of the drainage system towards South Cherry Street, we've regraded it, so most of this area is now going into our drainage system this way, but obviously it's all grass now, so it's a reduction heading towards this way anyway. Um, so overall, we're reducing, um, the amount of runoff, both volume and, uh, peak runoff rate that's going into the town system to the discharge point. Uh, the existing site, now this area right here, where all the spoils have been laid, is, you can see there's piles, stockpiles of material, this is a very tight soil, if you ever drive by the site, it ponds readily, um, it's a very, there's no clays really in Connecticut, but it's a very fine silt material that will get exported, um, from heavy rains, it's a bunch of ponding areas, it deals, does drain into the storm drainage system over here eventually, if it gets high enough, uh, and so there's no stormwater facilities basically on the site, except for the dry well, a couple of dry well catch basins over here. Um, what we're proposing is basically clean water into an infiltration system, all this paved area goes into a, two vortices- All this paved area goes into a two-foot entry devices to get, you know, eighty percent TSS removal and most of the pollutants out, then into these infiltration detention systems, and then out and tying into the system. Um, basically, for peak flow rates, uh, the average reduction is around thirty percent for peak flow rate. Our average volume reduction ranges from twenty-four percent for a two-year storm down to six percent for a hundred-year storm. So we're reducing, as I said, the volume and the rate off the site to the eventual discharge point. Um, we've done the testing for here. Over in here, we have, uh, we did the test pits with a backhoe, um, got down on eight, nine feet, no sign of any water.
What did you find at eight or nine feet?
All fill, junky fill, all the way down.
Well, are you going to go deeper to find the sand?
Uh, what we did is, excellent question. So back here, we did three holes. We went deeper. When we dug down to eleven feet, we actually got to the original sand.
So you can get these, uh, infiltration systems down to eleven feet?
Uh, yes. Basically, if, if that was the appropriate way to construct these, we could remove all this silty material and, you know, uh, backfill with appropriate material to get into that sand layer. However, this silty material, the reason the existing condition is so bad right here is the, the material is so compacted from years of Public Works coming in there, piling material, coming back in and taking material, piling in and doing that over. So the whole top foot and a half, two feet, probably even better than that, is very compacted. So on top of being silty, it's compacted, so.
How do you expect it to infiltrate if it's that compacted?
It's just on the, on the top handful of feet. So what we did is when we were doing the test holes, is we did a hole here and a hole back here, is we dug down three, four feet. This one's about six feet in the ground. This one's about five feet in the ground. We dug down to the base of the thing and we did the, had a, actually had a geotechnical company. We didn't ourselves do permeability testing. And he came out, and I have that information for you. He came up with two and a half, um, feet per day as the perk rate.
But if you went down to the eleven feet, you couldn't hold any water.
Oh, yeah, no, it would, it would all disappear.
That's, that's where I think you should end up.
And that is, if, if that is a recommendation, we certainly could do that. It wasn't our plan, obviously. We're, we're trying to keep it, you know, the construction costs down, but.
But I don't think you need a whole infiltration system that large if you get to eleven feet.
Correct.
That'll suck up the water faster than you can put it in.
But it also acts as a detention system. So the infiltration is slower. If you have a storm event and it's like a four, five-hour, high-intensity storm, which is kind of the way the storms have been going more lately, uh, the water hits so fast, I mean, you've seen it, and it runs off even grass before it can soak in nowadays.
This isn't that kind of area. You're not trying to feed a, a true wetland in this area.
Correct.
You, you've, you've got, you've got, you're right on the edge of a sand pit. You're right on the edge of an old landfill. You're right on the edge of, uh, where they dumped all the ash from the trash energy plant. And the interesting thing about that site is the dump, when the dump accepted all the cans and everything they dumped there, the rust was coming out from under the landfill. By the time it crossed the wetland, it was pure water. If you ever wanted to see a function of a wetland do what it's supposed to do, it was down there. Now I think they covered all that over with the ash from the trash plant. But I can't see, I don't think you're going to save that much money when you try to, you're talking about infiltration, and your infiltration into what? What are you trying to feed with this water? You're trying to dispose of the water and get it to ground recharge. And that would be the thing at eleven feet.
But it's also stormwater detention. You also have to detain the water so the peak flow rate doesn't increase as well.
Peak flow rate in the recharge?
No, no, there's a difference, okay. These systems, they serve two purposes. They store the water, so your peak flow, where you have the, the most amount of rain that's hitting the ground, you're holding that back and then releasing it slow, and at the same time, it's percolating into the ground.
But you're releasing it slow to the storm drainage system?
Right.
That's going to go across the street into the town system and then go back into a recharge system. You're going to recharge it.
Back into, it's actually a two-grade discharge. But yes, it'll, it'll recharge. But the thing I'm saying, I totally agree with you. If, if we could just do an infiltration system and not worry about, uh, peak flow rates, we could definitely downsize the system huge. But one of DEP's requirements is you have to completely store and infiltrate the water quality volume, which is the one-inch runoff. So with that amount of impervious area, that actual cubic footage, that volume, is pretty big. So the, the infiltration into the ground, even if we punched all the way down to the sand, is still going to be slower than the water coming in from the storm event.
I find that one hard to believe. Especially in that sand. The only thing that's going to create the difference is a high water table.
No, well, infiltration also works, another flip side of looking at infiltration, you need that surface area. It's the contact area that's infiltrating. So if you have a small, a small pail with a, a tube of water on it versus a, a big box with the same volume of water and the same sand, it's going to go a lot faster through the big box because it has the big surface area contacting the sand than a small area.
But you not have the same size box. You're going to put it into a denser product than the sand that's a virgin sand to that area.
Right.
So your analogy is understandable, but not in this case.
Well, not what my, what I'm trying to say, I'm not making that analogy. Even if we go all the way down to the sand, we're still going to need about the same size. So we're not going to save costs by excavating all the way down to the sand. However, that said, if that's a recommendation of the commission, that is certainly a construction aspect that would be easy enough for us to change on the plans. I am not opposed to that at all, and I, I apologize if it came out in my discussion that way.
Continue, continue your presentation.
Okay, yes. Now, this is where, this is where you're not going to be happy. So I'm al- already prepared to be tabled. It's all good. Um, I received the environmental planners report. Aaron, that's for you. Um, a couple of days ago. So I have done what I can to answer them in a timely fashion. Um, and I understand this is not the place to be going through this, so, however, for your reading material for this evening, while I'm sure this will probably keep you up till way late at night because it is so entertaining. But so I, I think I have answered all the issues. It requires some minor plan changes. There are some things that are, were missed in our plans that require revisions in accordance with this. There's also, uh, comments in this. I think that, um, I didn't have the information to answer properly when Aaron asked, so I've since gotten that information. Excuse my lack of proper English. And I have, um, answered them properly. And basically, a lot of it came down to was the infiltration rates. As designed, having it be way above the soil, even into that junk soil, these things will drain, both infiltration systems. I have the calculations for how long it will take them to drain. And if, uh, actually, I'm sorry. I'm holding this because I just like all this wonderful paperwork. This is actually the peak flow rate reductions and, uh, the calculations for how long it would take these systems to completely drain. Aaron, I think I gave you that in that packet, but I'll just be sure. On the first table is just the, the peak flow rates, which I already tell you. The second one is the volumetric, uh, reduction that we spoke about. If you flip to page two, and, uh, that talks about on the top, going into the post-development storage and outer storage, that's the conglomerate for both systems. Uh, SWMB2, which is the system that takes just the roof, the time to infiltrate is the bottom row on those for each storm. So for the two-year storm, it would take sixteen hours for the whole system to completely empty through infiltration and.
Culture.
Oh, I'm sorry. And, uh, as you can see, the time to infiltrate for the hundred year is a sixteen point nine hours. And same thing with the other infiltration system, nineteen hours and to twenty hours for the system being full to completely infiltrate. And that, and those line up with what, uh, the recommendations are for DEP in their stormwater manual, which is anywhere from twelve to seventy-two hours is what they want to see for your average storm event, ten, twenty-five year.
And sixty seconds, can you explain to me how you can take the junk fill out there and put your system into it and you know it's going to work the way you functioned on this paper? Because if there's pockets of asphalt or of leaves or road sweepings, how, how do you, how can you tell me this system's going to work the way you've designed it on paper?
Excellent question. I can't a hundred percent. Um, in our, in the test holes, if you look at the, the logs for the test holes, they're actually pretty uniform material, which what the Public Works did, and I'll give them credit for it, is they stacked, when they had that kind of junk material, they would store it on-site and dispose of it elsewhere. From the best we can tell from the test holes we did, the material's fairly uniform. It's junky material, but it is, at least, it's uniform material. There's no construction debris. There was not one, even garbage or anything, that we could see in the nine test holes we did. But again, it could well be. We might've got lucky and dug around them as well. So that is a valid point.
That's it? Yeah. Ally?
I'm good.
Dave?
I'm just, no, I'm just.
He's not, he's not, uh, Mike?
We, wait a minute, I take a second, I'm just looking at the, looking at the thing, but the, and again, the question is.
Microphone, there.
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, question is, yeah, we, we, um, are making assumption based on, uh, on three test holes, and it seems reasonable, but I've seen a situation where somebody ran into an absolute disaster because things outside the test holes, uh, weren't picked up. So I'm a little, so I'm, I'm just saying, I'm sharing Nick's concern about how do we know what's there and what's the guarantee?
If you don't mind me just plopping this up here, and of course, I gave it to you upside down because that's the way my day seems to be going.
That's right.
So you can see, uh, we did a test hole here and here.
Right.
And then three in here. So, I mean, certainly the soils could change dramatically in between these, but if you look at from here to here to here, there, the, there's photographs in the test hall logs, and the, the material looks very uniform. And same thing with these two. These actually match this type of material as well. So there, there's always the chance of they, they put something here and, but that's why we did them over the systems, so it's our best representation of what we believe the systems will be constructed in.
So you're saying that they found somebody to take the garbage fill and they kept the better fill there to fill their site?
You'd have to ask Rob, I don't know where that material came from. I don't know if it was a construction site that they did an excavation for a large building and just needed a place to get rid of the material or where it came from.
Most of it was storm sewer work.
Times material.
Had any large construction site, right, Nick?
Yeah. Originally, the sand was taken out there for the highway work.
Yeah, but long before they refilled it.
Yeah.
Because when they started filling that, there was actually a pocket of, of, uh, wetlands down in the bottom of that, that somehow, you were down to groundwater, is what you were, you were. The sand, you were digging down to groundwater, but that somehow must've got overlooked.
Is that an aquifer area?
Uh, no, God, I hope not. We're considering the landfills across the street. Yeah, but as far as my research, no.
Okay. Mike? Rob?
Just to reiterate, why can you not go down to the eleven feet, you know, where you have the primeval sand, which will actually drain a lot better? I mean, you said there was a reason why you couldn't go down that far.
We could, no, there's no reason we can't.
Okay, because it seems to me that getting into the sand will, uh, alleviate the water issue going into the storm drains, you know, onto the street and what have you.
There's no guarantee, we got sand and reached sand in two of those holes, but there's no guarantee that that's like a uniform layer of sand either.
I'll put my money on a uniform layer of sand over I'll put my money on a uniform layer of fill. Mother Nature prepared that area.
Well, I don't, I wasn't around for the excavations when they pulled the sand out, so, I mean, normally you do, when you do a gravel excavation, you keep the bottom level or you pitch it to one corner so you don't have to worry about water ponding where you're working and stuff like that. That's the normal way to do things, but, I mean, I don't know if that's what was done out here or if it was the, the November rush to get more sand for snow coming that winter.
Oh, I don't think it was necessarily snow. I think it was oil in the roads.
Oh, okay.
That's where all these sand pits came along.
I remember that. I actually remember that.
Sure. That's where the sand was. It wasn't, they didn't spend this kind of money sanding roads in back then. That was crazy.
Okay.
So that was oil in roads.
Had studded tires to, uh, deal with that stuff, none.
Jennifer, you ready to join in? Any questions?
I have one question.
Sure.
How do you determine how many test holes to do?
Uh, there, it's not cut and dry. It's, you could, at the, the best way to do it would be to dig up the entire site completely so you can see everything, but obviously that's just not feasible. So you just, we, what we try to do is have them far enough apart and you look at what's on the surface and what's underneath, and if you see any changes, then maybe that determines you need an intermediate test hole. But if everything looks the same, then you just continue with that separation.
There's no standard? You just, you get out there and?
It, around here, the soils can change. I've seen it in the woods where holes can be twenty feet apart and be completely different soils.
Okay. So you're prepared to be tabled tonight?
Yes, sir.
So unless there's any other questions, Aaron, have you, you got anything specific tonight or you'll deal with him after your review is answers?
Yeah, just one thing, because we were kicking it around before about this business of infiltrating everything to the wonderful sand located beneath the site, okay? Is there some reason the peak, the planning and zoning commission zoning regulations, peak flow regulation won't be satisfied by that?
I'm sorry, can you say, ask that again?
You were required under the zoning regulations to mitigate the peak flow rate.
Correct.
And make it no more water leaving the site than leaves the site today.
Correct.
But if you put it all down, then.
Well, the problem is, Aaron, doing that to, to put it all down, because infiltration through the soil is slower than it runs off over land. So when it rains and it hits the ground, it's going pretty fast, but when it's soaking into the soil, it's a lot slower. So you would need a ton of detention to hold all that water to let it slowly drain it. I mean, that would be the ideal answer, but again, it's just the, the amount of volume to hold it all.
Oh, okay, so it has nothing to do with the peak flow rate requirement?
No, no, volume, yeah, volume and flows, they're interrelated, but yes, they're not directly correlated.
Okay.
Now, this, talking about getting down to the sand, I wasn't referring it to be a hundred percent to the sand. You're still going to have, your existing system has an overflow to the street.
Correct.
Well, I, I would think that would be the same with, if you get down to the sand, even if you get a light, a, a small trench down to the sand. Anyway, any other, any other questions? Do we want to, do we want them to get to the sand? Commissioners?
I think it'd be a viable situation to get down to the sand to alleviate, uh, any flooding issues on the street. I mean, I haven't been over that way in a long time, so.
Certainly would help limit it. Why don't you work on a plan to get to the sand?
Okay, will do.
Okay?
If you work on a plan to get to the sand, that's going to screw up your fall lines for the water going out into the street?
Uh, no, because it'll all be underneath anyways and it'll just be stored there. So what I'm kind of thinking along your lines is almost like, um, a few dry well-type things, not the whole system being dropped all the way down, but just having a few connection points?
Yeah. Yeah, it doesn't have to be the whole system. But, uh.
That makes sense.
Okay, so then I'll entertain a motion to table this application.
Mr. Chairman, we make a motion, application A-19-11.2, 425 South Cherry Street, uh, be tabled.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay? Thank you. Okay. Uh, new business, none tonight, Aaron?
No new business.
And, uh, received in new applications, nothing?
None.
And the rest, uh?
Report.
Okay, system communications violations. What are we doing with violations, Aaron?
Okay, for the first one, 988 East Center Street, I recommend you affirm that the notice of violation remains. We had the special meeting on November eighteenth, and, uh, the permittees indicated he would put, uh, he's going to put the plantings in by, by the middle of May, I believe it was.
May twentieth.
May twentieth? Okay, so that, so we want the violation to remain in effect.
Okay. So, that, so we want the violation to remain in effect until that day happens, until the plants are in the ground.
And, and it was determined that he did have a violation or is this going back to the original violation?
It, it-
Is this a follow-up violation or is this the original violation?
This is the original.
This is the original violation.
As part of the original violation, he was gonna mitigate, do several mitigations.
Yeah, but I-
He's done all of the mitigations except for the planting, the extensive planting plan.
So, he's got until May to, to, to that?
Yes.
Okay. Is, uh, uh, is that requiring a motion, I think?
To, to affirm?
Motion just confirms that the violation stays in effect till May 20th, you said?
20th, 2020.
May 20th, 2020.
Until he satisfies that, yes. Until he satisfies it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that notice of violation 988 East Center Street Benchmark Land Development LLC, uh, remain in effect until the work is complete in May.
Second?
Second.
Call for-
Orso.
Call for a vote. Ally?
Aye.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Number two violations, 16-22.1, 530 Church Street, Joseph Minery. What's going on with him? I thought he resolved all those issues.
He just doesn't have the wetland placards in, so.
Oh, remain in effect?
So, you, you're going to, to, uh, that notice of violation is still in effect?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, make a notice, I make a motion that notice of violation A16-2.1, 530 Church Street, Joseph Minery, remain in effect.
Motion made, seconded?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Going on to number three, 52 Hanover Street, Quinnipiac River.
That one, I'd like to remain in effect until we see how, you know, he put in 22, 25 trees, young trees and shrubs, until we see how they weather the winter. I mean, he did all the work, but I wanna make sure everything lives and, and the slope doesn't erode away. That's another concern.
Mr. Chairman, make a note, a motion that notice of violation 52 Hanover Street slash Quinnipiac River, Mary Jane Webster, Legast, remain in effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? Call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Number four, 1245 Old Colony Road in Quinnipiac Street, unpermitted fill. Stays in effect?
Uh, the easy answer is stays in effect. I was going to, um, bring you up to speed on what happened with that.
Well, you, you, you got an engineer out there, Ann Mathia?
Yeah. Well, so, I met with that team, um, twice since the November 6 meeting and, uh, they did hand in some elevations, some mapping, um, preliminary, only one copy. They're gonna make more copies. But, um, I heard today that the, they have a contract with the soil. They got, uh, Ken Stevens outfit, um, to be their soil scientist to go out and do the wetland flagging. I guess because you, you don't know what happened. What happened is I, or I did send out the letter in the packet. I got out the 1969 old soil survey that was done by the Soil Conservation Service, Frank Endorf, back in the day. And apparently, the last third of that property is wetlands. So, what, the wetland line was basically kissing the fill line. And I said, if you don't believe that this is right, maybe this information is wrong from 1969. If it's wrong, I want you to have a wetland scientist prove that it's wrong. And, and then we can mark, so the wetland sites is gonna go out there and flag where the wetlands are and then we can mark back the 50 feet from the wetlands and it's gonna be a lot of fill. So, that's where we are today.
Good.
So, remain, oh, remain in effect.
Yep.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that notice of violation 1245 Old Colony Road in Quinnipiac, uh, River Jersey, Pyattel, remain in effect.
Second?
Second.
Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Robert?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Number five, notice of violation, 1103 Old Colony Road, NRWA.
All right. Went out in the letter, in the packet just before Thanksgiving. Um, my letter to Janice Small, because at the November 6 meeting, the Wetland Commission voted to put that notice on the land records, the, notice violation on the land records for this site. She indicated to me today she is willing to do that, but she and I, she, she and I are gonna draft the letter, a letter to the owner because the property was sold in March. And I'm using the, um, the former entity, the entity that owned it before March. It's owned by Countrywise, something Countrywise now owns it. Same individual, but different entity. Same, um, Mr. Khan, but different enti, name of the outfit. So, anyway, it's a formality and she will put it on the notes, the notice on the land records. She has no problem doing that.
Well, I've been by there multiple times and he did nothing as we requested.
Right. There's two things. He did lots of things up until, but he hasn't done anything in the last month. And the two things he was supposed to do to remain is that long skinny, um, depressional area, Mr. Chairman, that you wanted behind that main building. They just were stubborn about it. They just wouldn't put it in there. And then the other-
And it looks actually like they filled it in. They put additional fill in there. To me, anyway, it looks like additional fill is on in that.
They may have. Okay. And then, and then the other thing is I asked for straw mulch on all the dirt areas and they didn't.
They did. I did see him filling a dumpster in there not too long ago.
Getting the junk out, you mean? Well, that's good.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion, uh, that notice of violation 1103 Old Colony Road, NRWA LLC, uh, remain in effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, call for a vote. Ally?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Robert? Yes. Okay. Now, tell us about Mr. Jeff Andrews. What's going on with him?
Um, I haven't been involved. I do from the, uh, Janice Small Corporation Council. She said that the EPA is involved. They went down this, earlier this fall, I think it was September. They made a site visit there, um, collected a lot of data and there's gonna to be enforcement action coming from EPA in Boston. And we're just waiting for it.
EPA finally got on the sick.
Yeah.
Okay. Good. And they, it renews our, uh, confidence. Okay. Anything else to come before us tonight? Not, I'll entertain a motion. Oh, go ahead, Dave.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, as you know, this is my last meeting tonight. I've had, submitted my resignation to the commission. Uh, in early November, I was elected as a flotilla commander of, uh, Guilford Flotilla 2404, uh, which is a, the soon that actually my, um, Ellen Deutsch had when she was vice chair. Uh, part of that office requires that I attend the division meeting, which is the first Wednesday of, uh, of every month. And I can no longer serve here and do the, and do my new, uh, new duties. I am sorry to leave. I've had a lot of fun. I've enjoyed the people I've worked with and, uh, I wish the commission well in the future.
Thank you, Dave. And, and we wish you have fun in your new job.
Oh, thank you.
We have a new member with us tonight, Jennifer Passeretti. Is that it? Joined our team, which is nice. Got a full, uh, full slate. But no, please enjoy, uh, the flotilla and, uh, uh, come back and visit once in a while.
I'm gonna watch it on TV. Um, okay. With that, can I make my last?
Make your official last motion.
This is my last motion. Uh, I move to the meeting. Be adjourned.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good.